Okay. All right. Well, I'll just bang my hand. Okay, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at six o'clock. I'll go ahead and start with the roll call.
Chen. De La Cruz. Absent, Difacolswane. Absent, Everhard. Galant. Absent, Kowano. Kirby.
Here.
Kirchman. Lee. Okay, Mitchell?
Here.
Nakamoto. Absent. Oh, he's walking in. Peters. Salassa. Salassa, absent. Silva. Absent. Steel Quiz.
Here.
Withum. And Char. Okay, and Chuck Lee just walked in. Uh, Chair Yefkorm with 12 members present.
Thank you very much, Curtis. Uh, we'll go ahead and Honolulu Fire Department, I believe they're still getting food at the farmers market, so we'll circle back to them. Uh, Honolulu Police Department, they are on a call. Oh, Sergeant's on his way. Okay, so uh, they have, we have a couple of things for, with the police tonight, so we'll circle back to that as well. Okay, moving on to city reports. Uh, starting with the Board of Water Supply. Uh, no. Okay, uh, unfortunately, Michelle Harmon can't make it, so if she shows up, we'll try and circle back. Uh, so next up, we have Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative, Megan Johnson.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Megan Johnson, on behalf of Mayor Blangiardi. In the interest of time, um, I've submitted a written report with responses to questions posed at the September 2025 meeting um, to Chair Char. If anyone has any questions, please let me know. And I'm also going to drop a link to the mayor's October newsletter in the chat. Um, so please take a look at the newsletter and um, otherwise, if, if there's no questions, I'm, that's the end of my report.
Okay, uh, are there any questions from board members? Seeing none, are there any questions for the mayor's representative from attendees? Seeing none, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Uh, next up, we have Councilmember Scott Nishimoto. All right, seeing no one from Scott Nishimoto's office, moving on to Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos-Tam. Okay, seeing none, uh, moving on to community concerns from residents. Uh, residents not board members can share comments and concerns that are not listed on the agenda. Per the sunshine along, concerns not on the agenda may be presented, but the board cannot take action. Uh, you'll be limited to two minutes. Are there any community concerns? Tom Heinrich.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Tom Heinrich, I just wanted to bring this up. Uh, I may have mentioned this to you last week, uh, when we had a conversation. Uh, but not on your agenda for this evening is any follow-up to the permitted interaction group that the board established to do a district walk-around or whatever. That's where I have to put my period because what now needs to happen is you need to identify specifically what the purpose of that PIG is and as well be clear as to who the members of that permitted inter- interaction group are because you cannot exceed eight since you cannot have a quorum uh, on that PIG. So that clarity and, and specifically what is the purpose or purposes of that PIG uh, so that it can do what it's intended to do and then report back uh, to the board uh, uh, as, as set forth in HRS Chapter 92. Thanks.
Thank you for uh, the keeping us straight, Tom. Uh, are there any further community concern? Yes, Ca- uh, Rich Kaz. And if you could give us your name, please.
I didn't know my name, no. Uh, Rich Kaz. Uh, quick question. So I wasn't sure if this was uh, brought up in the past meetings on that banyan tree that's on Pensacola and uh, while there. You know, I saw them this past week cutting it all the way down and like just trying to remove the whole stump versus, you know, and I did reach out to the Sierra Club, uh, just trying to find out, you know, what kind of permits and, you know, what was actually going on with that because it seemed like it was a historical large tree that, you know, kind of left a lot of things. Was that discussed uh, previously on trying to see what's going on? Because that is a Paul Lamb's uh, corner lot that uh, they're doing construction. So we know that he actually, you know, instigated it to remove that tree. Just wanted to see if anybody checked on that.
Yeah, the response from the city was that uh, it was on the property and so they removed it. Yes.
Aloha, Claire Santos, on this side of the table. Um, I talked with Rich, to Rich's point, to outdoor circle about that tree being removed and what we found was that, that they have, it's private property all the way to the street. So Lamb was, the construction crew was free to remove the historic beautiful tree because it was on private property.
Thank you, Claire. Uh, okay, um, seeing no further community concerns. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, I'm being requested that we uh, recognize fire first. We'll come back to you. Fire, thank you so much for being able to make it. Sorry, thanks.
I'm firefighter Hickson. I'm here to present the incident statistics for September of 2025. After that, my captain can help answer any questions you guys might have. Uh, as far as uh, fires, we had one structure fire. We had five nuisance or rubbish fires. We had 12 activated alarms at which there were no fire. As for other emergencies, we had 137 medical calls. We had one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian. We had three motor vehicle crashes or collisions. We had one mountain rescue. And that concludes the incident statistics for September of 2025. I also have the fire safety tip and announcement for you guys, which pertains to seasonal decorations. Was the holiday season just around the corner? Consider fire-resistant, non-combustible decorations. Choose only underwriters laboratory-approved electrical decorations and follow manufacturers' instructions for installation and load. Use lights that are in good repair. Always turn off lights before leaving your home or going to bed. Do not overload power strips, surge protectors, or extension cords. Never leave candles unattended. Secure lighters and matches out of reach from children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from board members? Seeing none, are there any from attendees? Yes, um, I, I'll go ahead and recognize Michelle first.
I just was interested in knowing where that pedestrian accident occurred.
And just for the record, if we could get your name again, please.
Michelle Luke, thank you.
So uh, we to put it as plainly as I can, I have no idea. Uh, we go to a lot of pedestrian accidents and there's three different watches. So the one they're reporting is September. I've probably gone to a couple since then, so I'm not sure. Yeah. I, I apologize, but uh, they just gave us the, the numbers. It's a busy truck. Yeah.
Okay, uh, Claire, and then after that, I'll recognize Rich. Claire.
Hello again, Claire Santos. Fire people. Thank you, thank you, thank you from this former burn nurse on about the non-combustible decorations for the holidays. I live in a condo that recently put a bunch of Halloween decorations in the lobby right across and next to the elevator which I know is a fire code violation. So I wrote to the property manager and the site manager. I said, please take them down. They have to be non-combustible. Um, and away from the egress and ingress of the elevator, but the response was, thank you for your opinion. So who do we call?
Uh, I would suggest our Fire Prevention Bureau.
Oh, if you could speak into the mic, please. Thank you so much, Captain.
So for situations like that, uh, most of the larger buildings get covered by our Fire Prevention Bureau. Uh, it's on that honolulu.gov. If you click the fire department website, you can get a link with all the contact information there.
Thank you, fire. I did talk with an inspector at a meeting yesterday and he concurred the decorations need to come down, but I don't know how to get someone of, in a blue uniform to say that. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Rich, thank you, Claire.
Different, Rich.
Rich Kaz. Uh, quick one on that, um, the 12 false alarm, fire alarms that's going on. Uh, were those at least 10 of them at 1427 Ernest Street? Uh, and then if it is, um, is there any way of having the owner be accountable to keep on having you folks come to 1427 and do everything you do because it takes time and effort to, you know, offload, do all your stuff and everything. And I, I see you folks there almost every day. But anyway, yeah.
Uh, yes, we do go to 1427 Ernest a lot. However, um, I cannot tell you how many of those false alarms were for 1427 Ernest. Uh, almost every building with an alarm system will have occasional false alarm activations. And to be honest, uh, we don't mind going because that's why, what we sign up for. We want to go and help anybody who needs help and sometimes a loud noise means you need help. So uh, we're happy to come out and check it out. But uh, today, we started the day with two false alarm, uh, fire alarm activations and none of them were on Ernest Street. So uh, it's not only you guys, but yeah, yeah. I have no idea how many were.
Okay, um. I'm sorry, I'm blanking super. Okay, Kahana.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair. Uh, is there a way we can find out? Could you bring it with you next month or pass it on to uh, the next watch that comes?
Uh, as far as the, the actual numbers per addresses and so forth, um, I would basically just try to write to our um, Fire Prevention Bureau to see if they can get statistics for particular addresses.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Arthur.
Thank you so much.
I have two questions for you.
Yes, sir.
In the past, uh, you used, the fire department used to go to the condos and do walkthrough inspections. I haven't seen very much of that uh, in the past, it's recently. Secondly, uh, the holidays is here and plus we have another issue that it should be very high on the uh, awareness list is this lithium battery and charging.
Oh, yes.
Now, to me, the Fire Prevention Bureau, I would like to ask or have them pursue some kind of handout to the condo managers that they can provide to the owners, number one, on the Christmas tree issue, the uh, extension cord issue, and how to charge a lithium battery so that we don't have an explosion and fire uh, problems for you.
Absolutely. Uh, and our Fire Prevention Bureau actually has a section on community education now. So uh, that is a resource that you can use for specifically for education and things like that. So a lot of times they have printed handouts, a lot of times they'll even go as far as uh, coming down to a facility to get uh, an educational presentation for residents and so forth. Uh, so they've done a, a lot of, uh, they've expanded in a lot of ways to help uh, preventative measures like that.
Okay.
Yep.
When, when you're doing your tours of the condos and
So that's actually not us because when we go, we're on duty. So we show up and go, we're so happy to help you. Oh, there's an alarm and we're gone and which has happened at the neighborhood board also. So we actually have a section in the fire department that's dedicated to community education and so forth. So you don't have that problem of having your class counseled because there's an emergency or something. So it, it would be someone in a fire uniform, but it wouldn't be from our truck.
Well, if you could reach out to them, because I haven't seen any inspections recently going around.
And then uh,
That's the avenue to hand out these brochures so that they, the management has something to, from a condo point of view, this is what the fire department insists we do.
Well, it is uh, one of those things that is uh, a reactive thing in the sense that we don't want to come and force information down anyone's throat. We always wait for the invitation. So uh, if uh, you have an interested party, then um, contact the Fire Prevention Bureau, specifically their education department, and they're happy, you know, every time I've uh, passed that information along, they've been happy to go.
Thank you, Arthur. Harris.
Yeah, I can help after. I, I'll help you because we have a contact uh, with the fire in terms of the fire prevention. Actually, he, he participates with, with some of our programs. So I'll get you the information after. Okay. And, and anybody else that uh, wants to in, in terms of if you have uh, your condominium and you want uh, some advice because as we go along with the programs, then we, we find out that many of the condominiums are very interested to either develop that fire plan that they need, that they, they actually should have.
Definitely.
But they don't have. So um, they, they've been very, very helpful. So
Yeah, and we definitely appreciate
Yeah.
when you have proactive uh, boards like that and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harris. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Six-six are away.
Okay, um, continuing back to community concerns, Lindsay.
Thanks, Chair Char, Lindsay Chambers. I see that the um, traffic safety meeting is on the agenda. So if you'd rather wait till that discussion to share some of these comments, it's in regards so that I can wait till that portion.
Uh, yes, if you could, please. Thank you so much. Okay, uh, are there any further community concerns? And then if you could give us your name, please. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, my name is Richard Ching. Uh, I was like, is there any way we can uh, do a resolution to get the people who steal shopping carts from uh, whatever stores of, around, like Safeway, Walmart, they're always ending up by our, down our street. And then they end up down by underneath underneath the freeway. There's like maybe 40 or 50 of them stashed over there. I'd like to get that taken care of. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that's a bit of a problem. Uh, so I'll definitely look at it uh, for the future agenda since we can't take that up now. Okay, um, and then Robert Peters, unfortunately, the community concerns is for uh, residents only. So um, it is out of order to recognize you at this time. Okay. Okay, uh, and then I believe uh, circling back since uh, Taylor Datta is here. Um, so back to Scott Nishimoto's office.
Oh, hi, Chair. Uh, sorry, um, just wanted to give you guys a quick update. Um, my boss had a walkthrough today or sorry, yesterday with the Makiki, um, the person in charge of the Makiki um, park. And so they're starting to look at, they did a walkthrough in terms of the fencing project. And they're going to put out an RFP within the next couple of months. And they're kind of looking at a May 2026 um, conclusion date for the fencing projects of Makiki Gardens. Um, everything is pending, of course, but it is good news that we're heading in that direction. Um, I did see that you folks had some sort of resolution, but um, yeah, please know that they do, they have been making plans to do so. And also they're finalizing the park on Punahoe Street and they just need to get up some signs for the new dog park. Uh, so once that is concluded, they're going to have a grand opening and everything. And so we'll keep you apprised of what's going on there.
Okay, thank you very much, Taylor. Are there any uh, questions for Scott Nishimoto's office? Seeing, oh, Kahana. Arthur, if you don't mind passing the pink one. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Kahana Chan, uh, excuse my ignorance, but what, what does OP stand for in relation to checking the park?
Oh. I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you mean.
Uh, in the beginning of your um, breakdown, you were talking about the park was uh, gonna have the walk-around.
Mm-hmm.
And you use the acronym OP, I believe I heard. I'm sorry, I forget.
No, I'm sorry, I, I, I must have mistakenly used that. I'm not really sure what you're talking about. But yeah, we had a but yeah, we did have a walkthrough with the person who is responsible for the entire district area that does the projects and puts out RFPs for the park.
Gotcha. Probably RFP, thank you.
Oh, yes, sorry, RFP. That's, that's the word.
Okay, uh, are there any questions from attendees? Seeing none, thank you very much, Taylor.
I'm so sorry. I had my hand up. Can I ask a quick question?
Oh, Amanda, yeah, go, go ahead and Amanda.
That's okay. Um, thank you so much, Taylor, for being here. Amazing. I appreciate it. We are so excited for this. Um, what is, what is an RFP?
Uh, it's a request for proposal. So they're going to put out a request to basically figure out how much the entire project is going to cost and then have people bid on the project.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that, Amanda.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, and moving on to Governor Green's representative, Russell Pang.
Aloha, Chair, thank you. Uh, my camera doesn't seem to be working. I apologize for that. Uh, let me try it again. Yeah, oh, there I am. Hello, aloha, everybody. Uh, thank you for having me this evening. Um, I did put Governor Green's October newsletter in the chat room. Excuse my dog barking there. Uh, I'll keep this quick. I did want to highlight um, that starting November 1st, the speed camera citations will go into effect. So essentially, uh, we have the speed camera program that started in March. Since March, that program has been monitoring the 10 different intersections throughout the, the um, downtown Kakaoa area and um, looking for speeders. And if the camera trapped in a, a vehicle exceeding the posted speed limit, a warning was issued via mail to the registered owner of that vehicle. Um, so it's been about eight months since that program has been launched. Over that period, we've had about 30,000 warnings per week. Um, it's kind of slowed down since then, but still 30,000 per week um, since the program began in March. Um, quite alarming. Um, starting November 1st, um, those warnings will become citations which will require payment if you do receive one of those um, citations. So the, again, there are 10 intersections, excuse me, 10 intersections throughout the uh, Honolulu area. The closest ones to the Makiki district are at King and Ward and also Baratanya and Peikoi. Uh, I'll put a link to the 10 intersections in the chat room so that you can make sure that when you are in those areas, um, you are extra cautious. Um, those are also the same intersections that monitor for red light running. Um, that program is continuing. And again, if you do um, uh, run a red light in one of those intersections, you are most likely going to be receiving a citation as well. And you know, we, we, we have this program, the speed enforcement and the red light camera enforcement, camera enforcement programs. Um, our goal is not to issue these citations just for the sake of issuing citations. Our goal is to um, serve as a deterrent to speeding and running red lights and causing motor vehicle collisions. Um, today, um, Hawaii recorded its 102nd um, fatality, um, traffic-related fatality. Oahu has 67 of those fatalities so far this year. So those numbers are quite alarming. So we are hoping that the speed enforcement, the red light enforcement um, program is able to uh, serve as a reminder to just slow down and drive with caution and drive with aloha. And with that, I'll, I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you very much, Russell. Are there any questions from board members? I'll start with Richard.
Uh, Russell, about the speed. Uh, tell us about at what point is it tripped, if it does get tripped. Uh, is it, so I'm understanding it gets to a police officer that looks at it and then they decide whether to send out a letter or not. Same thing with the red light thing. Uh, is it like if your taillight is right at the end of the intersection? Yeah, tell somebody more how these things are voiced. What are their parameters?
Yeah, um, sure. I'll, I'll give you a little bit of, um, try to make this as simple as possible. Uh, for the speed camera, speed enforcement camera, the way the law is written is um, a citation could be issued if the vehicle is um, trapped going five miles over the posted speed limit. Um, most people go five miles over the speed limit anyway. So um, but that threshold is a little low. Um, it's likely that the threshold will be a little higher. I don't have the exact threshold right now, but uh, again, it will be a the, the way the law is written, a citation could legally be issued um, to a vehicle going five miles over the posted speed limit. Oh, sorry, that crazy dog. Um, if the camera, if the um, camera detects a vehicle going over the posted speed limit at the um, threshold, uh, it it triggers a, a notification to the vendor that is running this program for the state. Um, and they take a look at the videos and make sure that it meets all the requirements. It then goes over to the police department and, and um, their representatives also um, review and make sure that it meets all the requirements. And if, if so, then the citation will be issued. It's a very similar process for the red light camera program. Um, where if a, a vehicle enters the intersection after the light has turned red, um, that will trigger the camera. The, the notification will go to our vendor uh, who will review the information, review the video, make sure it meets all the requirements. From there, transfer all of the um, the, the video and the information over to the police department who will go through their review process uh, before issuing a citation. As far as um, when the vehicle enters the um, the intersection, if the vehicle is in the intersection while the light is still yellow, um, that's fine. The, the, they should not get a um, citation for that. If the vehicle If the vehicle is um there are, there are a couple of exceptions as well. So if the vehicle, if a a a police officer or an ambulance or or other uh first responder uh requires the vehicle to move out of the intersection um through the red light, you will not get a citation for that. So there are a couple of um exceptions for that. I hope that helps, Richard.
It does, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, and then Chuck.
Uh, yeah, Richard, um, I just want to follow up on um my inquiry a couple of meetings ago regarding the uh repaving of Luna Lilo from Peikoi um all the way up to Ward. Um, it's, it's kind of a long overdue, I think. There's a lot of um, well, potholes and and you can tell the road is very deteriorating. And I know you have a project up on Ward and it might cover part of Luna Lilo, but I don't think it covers the bottom part that goes down to Peikoi.
Was that, that shock, I'm sorry, who who asked the question? Just want to make sure.
It's Chuck.
Okay, uh, yes, so you are correct that um the that the project at Ward on the Ward overpass as well as the part of the uh repaving of the Kiomoku Street overpass as well as that area that you're referencing, the Luna Lilo area in front of the post office as you're heading to the on-ramp. Uh, that area as well is all part of the same project. That's the part of the H1 Miller Street repaving project. And all of those areas are due for repaving. Um, currently, we're in the process of trying to um finalize the contract with the vendor uh with the contractor to to do the work. So once that contract is finalized, it could take anywhere from three to six months to actually execute the work. So it is on the um on the agenda. Uh, but I don't have an exact timeframe for you yet, but I am keeping tabs on that because I'm in that area a lot as well, so. But thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
I appreciate your patience.
Thank you very much, Chuck. Uh, I saw Kahenu, Kahenu. Uh, if you could swap to the pink, uh, Chuck, if you could give him, hand over the pink uh microphone, thank you.
Uh, first request, could we open up the chat, please? Or if it's not too much trouble, if you have to go back and forth, thank you. Um, the first process that you went over for these speedlight cameras, sorry. How long does that whole process take once it gets triggered?
Um, it, I believe it's ten days. I I I I have to confirm that, but I believe it's a ten-day process. From the violation, from the violation to the issuing of the citation.
Got it, thank you. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, because the last few meetings I was on WebEx uh and not paying super close attention. But the question was brought up on the timeline for the repaving of all three areas. And I forget what the the term or the part in the process that you said it was, the name for that, where they're finalizing the the bidding part. But maybe a month at least ago, you said it was because of um challenged it. So is that same thing, okay?
Yeah, if um, there was a bid protest, meaning that um we we opened up the bidding process for proposals to do the work, RFPs. Um, and there was a bid challenge. Um, essentially, someone who did not get the bid um challenged it, which required uh another review to make sure that all the requirements uh were met. That protest um process has concluded. And so now we're able to move forward to execute the contract. So that's the the stage we're in now is just trying to finalize that contract.
Thank you, uh, last one. The first time, I'm not sure if you were unable to tell us or you just didn't have the information on who the contractors were? Are you able to tell us who? Or is that?
Still not able to tell you that. One, um, yeah, it's part of the process, so. Once uh, once it is finalized, I'll be able to share that information with you.
Thank you very much.
Chair, uh, Arthur, so because the police is here, I would actually like to circle back to the police. Russell, are you able to stick around until after the police report?
Oh, yes, of course, for HPD, anything, yes.
Awesome, thank you so much. We'll get back to you, Arthur. Uh, HPD, thank you so much uh for making it.
AC on, it's hot. I apologize for the delay, we had a case nearby and I, then we were stuck downstairs, couldn't get in the building. I'm Sergeant Morris, I've met you, some of you before. It's been a little while, I was out injured, so I, nice to see all you here here again. The stats from uh what I've got for the month of September, if you're interested, I can read them off to you guys. It is motor vehicle thefts, this month eight, previous month ten, so they've gone down. Burglaries, this month five, previous month eight, also gone down. Theft, unfortunately, has gone up thirty-one as opposed to twenty-six the month before. Car break-ins, U M V, way down, two this month, seven the month before. Assaults, went up a little bit, eleven this month and nine the month before. Sex assaults, still zero, that's always good news. Graffitis, reported graffitis, that is, zeros, same both months. Drug cases, unfortunately, they go up a couple, we had a couple at the school that I know of. We had five this month, three the month before. Car wrecks have gone down, I know Ward is a issue, but have gone down seventy, seventy-nine as opposed to eighty-three the month before. Uh, what else do I have? Okay, officially, good evening, people in attendance. I represent the Honolulu Police Department, Do You Want Community Responsibility? Thank you for your time and patience, sorry I'm late. That's not in here. The information provided today, uh, the total amount of cases for your area, for your statistical information, the general public can go to HPD public website located at www.honolulupd.org. The stats information for the month of of September are as follows, I gave you that already. Some issues I heard from the last meeting that were brought up, Pensacola and Luna Lilo. I heard that's kind of a trouble some area. This is concerning the residents who challenge, correct, in the area? We have, along with our ATVs, as well as the bikes, have taken care of the, we've tried to get them on, we have moved them on. Unfortunately, they come back. RCPs, a lot of times, you have to kind of keep reminding them, maybe offer them different places to go, different avenues. We're working on that, we will continue to work on that just today. I wrote a report, we were there again today taking care of this. So it's just a never-ending, location's nice and shady. So will attract, you know, this type of people, but working on finding them homes to stay in. Um, Ward and Luna Lilo, there's some questions about wrecks over there that was brought up. Yeah, I know a lot of them. My experience, I looked in the case, there wasn't overly too many the last month, that was both the month before, I don't have, I wrote it down, I don't have the papers in my car. The afternoon, when the sun's going down, are a lot of them. And that's the worst ones, cars being overturned, that kind of thing. And if you if you look, almost always either inattention or the sun coming in their window. Right, that's exactly the right spot, the sun goes down, if the windows are dirty, they can't see the lights. From my experience, that's the worst time is right when the sun's going down. Knock on wood, it's been a while since I seen one, but there have been some bad ones there. Speeding wise, I actually shot laser on Ward myself, I'm a laser instructor, from Thomas Square up. A few go, maybe five over, nobody goes crazy over, there's too many stoplights, I haven't seen anybody going crazy over up Ward. Now, I'm not sure Luna Lilo, I was shooting on Ward, I can't get bold, but when I was there, five of six over maybe is the fastest I saw. Uh, tips for this month? It's Halloween. There's gonna be a lot of puss and goblins walking around in costumes. Maybe a few Bruno Mars, maybe a few Karens in costumes with their parents. Be careful when you're driving around, when you're walking, look both ways. Also with costumes I'm referring to, watch yourself. This time of year, there's a lot of robberies. Even people walking on the street, they got masks on, they're hidden, they think they can do more. Just be careful, driving as well as, I don't want you walking around. If you guys didn't know, we're up to sixty-seven fatalities this year, driving, one more today. Didn't happen today from a while back, he passed away today, that's way too many. Um, any questions, I I I give you back my time, I I know I'm running later, I apologize.
No, thank you so much. Uh, I think, I believe we have some time for a couple of questions, because then I think you have your presentation on the Capuna as well?
Uh, Capuna, I don't think I do.
Okay.
I apologize, which one was I have? I have from the last meeting from Sergeant Walker's, but I don't have anything about Capuna.
Okay, uh, I could have sworn the HPD asked to be put on the agenda for uh some presentation on protecting Capuna from scams.
That prob, you know about that?
Nope, okay.
They wouldn't normally be patrolled doing that, probably are pretty policing, yeah, they're not here.
Okay, uh, so I guess they aren't able to make it here. Okay, uh, questions, uh, Kahenu.
How far aboard are you going?
Above the freeway.
Okay.
Because the concern was Luna Lilo area, so I was checking that area.
Um, and then a more, uh, the, excuse me. Uh, you went through the report, uh, and you went over the drug and traffic accidents.
Yes.
Could you tell us if drug catches or bust or whatever that statistic is, statistic is, is a trending substance? Or could you, would you just be able to tell us what it is?
Involved in?
Yeah, over the
I can't. Well, the big one was marijuana. And that was actually turned in by a child who it was, it, without getting too much detail, it wasn't his. It may have come from somewhere else. And he actually voluntarily gave it over, he wasn't caught with it, he voluntarily gave it over. But it still counts as a stat, but.
And there's no concern of substance use in?
No, not any more than, I mean, so it's actually, you look at that, there's actually only one over where the child didn't turn it in to get rid of it, kind of thing. So it's, no, really, no, no more than before.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Sure.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, uh, Kahenu, so next, um, Adam.
Yes, um, I live over on Pensacola and uh Davenport.
Okay.
Resident manager there, uh, Village Malohia. Um, there has been a rise of uh issues dealing with um a group of kids considering themselves a gang, um, Makiki something or other, they shout out when they do their, whatever they're doing. Um, yeah, last, two weeks ago, there was eight boys jumped. A Stevenson student took his backpack, his phone, his wallet, beat him up. Um, we've had teenage girls trying to get to class and young teenage girls like thirteen, fourteen um who had to ask help from a gentleman in our building just to get home, just to get to school, it was early in the morning. Um, we've had, you know, cars vandalized, we've had the same group of kids, you know? Um, and it's going, going to school and coming from and and coming home. These kids are scared. Um, and so my, I was wondering if there was, I know you only have during the hours of two and four, you have like three cops in our district at that time.
Well, not in the district, but in the area.
In the area, right, yeah. Um, is there any way we can get something going on, on just to get these kids home so that they're not afraid, the kid's getting beat up, bullied constantly from this group of kids? I've called the the principal at Stevenson, I've talked to the principal at Roosevelt. I've given pictures to them, I've given videos to the police department um of the actual group of eight beating up that kid. So my question is, can we create some kind of plan? Because the school's doing their part to make sure they feel safe there. I don't know what's going on at home, I can't do anything about that. But as a community, we can do our part and kind of give them support, at least in that middle ground, before they get home.
The case you're talking about, the backpack, I believe a robbery, I was off that day, but I believe a robbery case was made.
Yes, I I was there for that.
Okay, and I know our detectives are already on that to identify them. Um, if I recall, it was prior students in the report, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
I believe the uh suspects were possibly prior students, I might have been identified already. I thought I
Well, I mean, the the video footage was pretty good at picking up who was involved. And but I've seen that kid out, and then later on this week, um, one of those kids, I was out talking to one of my electricians on my building, uh, he came up and said that he was gonna whack my dog with his skateboard. And then when I asked him to clarify, he said I was gonna kill me, my dog, and my family.
I don't, I was off the street, but did you make that case? Did you?
I did file a report, um, and I got a picture of the kid and I gave it to the police department.
Is it the same kid that was involved in the?
Yes, it's one of the kids. They're all in the same little, I, you know, I I make no um illusions, I don't think that they're a gang, but they are acting as one and um making just as much of a mess.
I can, I work tomorrow, I believe I have four officers tomorrow, depending on caseload, I can't say what's going on tomorrow at two and four, unfortunately. I can have one or possibly two hang out in the area, if that helps you, but they might have to leave for something, if something comes up.
I I totally understand that, but just having a presence wouldn't mean the world to these kids.
That's by the cemetery, right? It's more in the cemetery.
No, it's between uh Wilder and Davenport is really where I see most of the problems. The kids that, the the group hang out on Davenport in a red and white building across from, across from my building or kitty corner from my building.
I can also talk to our community policing team, let them know, as well as sometimes we have the, what we call fourth watch, the new guys, who are out, and the guys and girls, and a lot of times we can use them if they're available for subs. Right now, they're doing, they're doing the strike, the guys, they're working down there today. There might be extra, I can throw a couple of them over there tomorrow as well.
That would be fantastic, even if we have, I know we have officers there that are working to direct traffic. Um, I know they're busy doing that.
Yeah, unfortunately, that is their priority.
No, I I know, um, but I mean, it just, if they could just keep an eye out too on on these kids, because they shouldn't be having to come to strangers in my building
Right.
to feel safe.
I know the school called last week to talk to us about it, I don't never, I would, I read the report, but I I don't know what happened out of that. That was in the afternoon, they called.
I'm gonna further have conversations with the school
Okay.
um, as well.
Well, let me talk to my officers tomorrow, I guess I work tomorrow, I work Saturday too, but no school on Saturday. I'll check tomorrow, I try to have at least two there, to to at least start the process of having us around, if if that works.
That that would be very helpful, thank you so much.
You bet, you bet.
Oh, yes, um, if you could come up to the microphone, please, and give us your name.
Yeah, hi, my name's Cameron Black, I'm the resident manager uh at the Barclay, which is Pensacola and Lilo, really close to where you're talking about. So I'm curious, uh, are you talking about the the Mission Academy? Is that the school that these students are are coming to and fro? Or which school are you talking about?
No, these kids are, uh, the kids doing the 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 group, the group gang stuff, they're coming from Roosevelt. The people being usually accosted are coming from Stevenson.
Okay, thank you.
I do believe the boy that was jumped was actually um either very end of middle school, beginning high school.
Appreciate it.
Hi, Lieutenant Henry Lee, I just want to comment on that specific question. And if you guys are not aware, I'm just a few lieutenant for night operations, I handle half the week. So in your particular um question, which we've been gaining a lot from other communities across the islands, um, the chief onward, if you're not aware, we're looking to implement school resource officers in schools. But with that, again, it's like, we we be transparent, we have to prioritize our resources. So certain schools, we are starting with school resource officers. So for that particular stuff, that may be a angle that the school would need to reach out to. But, and then we can, as a department, look at it and prioritize it. So we are gonna start on the west side, we have a couple of schools out there that we are looking to have school resources officers, the uniformed patrol officers um, working with their school and addressing mainly, you know, crimes of violence, um, bullying, those kind of things. Not saying it doesn't happen in any other uh part of the island, but we had prioritized that, so hopefully it will get to that area too. Okay, sir?
Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Uh, yes, if you could come up to the microphone, please, and give us your name.
Yeah, Richard Ching, um, the mainland, they have, they have, they, they're starting to do S R uh school resource officers too, but like, like you right here, you're in a, you're in a uniform, you're like, you're like standing out. So if there's a shooter on on campus, they're gonna shoot you first. I was thinking, well, and the, I wasn't thinking, but they're thinking of having armed teachers in the school, uh, because they don't, they can't tell who those people are, uh, teachers, janitors, staff. Uh, I don't know if that, that would help you guys out, I'd be, that'd probably be better than having you guys stand out there with your uniforms on.
So I'll, I'll just put this, I'll, I'll answer your question this way, sir. A lot of times when we're out there, the two main deterrence, one of the main deterrence against any sort of threat or any sort of, is our presence alone. We take this job knowing that if we go out there in plain clothes, the flip side, there's two sides of the coin. We get the public said, wow, I never knew that guy was an officer, even though the officer has their shield, they have their plastic ballistic vest. This is more This is more obvious in a high voltage situation where a lot of things are going on. It's dynamic. Somebody has a firearm. We want to know that I'm the police and there's no question that this guy, when I engage with this guy, he's not going to say, well, that's the guy. I thought he was going to rob me. We get those kind of a situations. So we got to weigh that overall and the school wants that presence because if they don't see us, the kid's not going to know. And our purpose is not to, um, like when we do plain clothes assignments, is to try to catch them, you know, doing a lot of criminal acts. We want to deter them. We want to work with them, get them on a good path to good behavior and that also that they can approach us and tell us information. The officer, you know what, so and so is going to fight today. I just wanted to let you know, but don't say anything and we can address it. So I, I thank you for that officer concern, but that's the overriding concern is, you know what, what is the more effective overall? And in the mainland, you know, their violence and particular areas may be different from Honolulu's, but that's what the direction has been from the chief yet. Hope to answer your question, sir.
Thank you very much for the very comprehensive answer. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the part of the HPD who are requesting focused HPD parking and traffic enforcement at Chick-fil-A Makiki. So as you know, there's a bit of a problem with parking and traffic enforcement over there. Uh, I believe Lindsay, did you have something to say on this? Oh. Oh, if you could speak into the mic, please. Thank you so much.
Hi, Chair Char. Sorry, I don't have anything planned for this. I mean, no additional comments other than what we discussed in the resolution, but it's just really at night. Um, when it becomes an issue is when cars are parked along the right side of Beritania Street and the drive-through queue starts to straddle two lanes. And folks driving on Beritania are trying to either avoid that line, which is now two lanes, and then turn into the home. So really two traffic laws are being violated with the straddling of the two lanes. Um, and then blocking of the active driveway for the QVR residents. So it's not so much an HPD thing, although we, it came up as a solution where additional blue lights and officers in that area could be a resource. But also I think Chick-fil-A had mentioned through conversations with Shoppo that officers probably wouldn't want to work a special duty shift. If it's short to two hours in that area, but I don't think they ever formally applied. So I think maybe comments on special duty resources for Chick-fil-A to hire, if that's an option, if they pay the premium rate and pay that night. I'm guessing officers would want to pick that kind of shift up, even if it's just two hours. So that's kind of all the comments I have for, for that.
Thank you very much, Lindsay.
I would assume that would have to go through special duty section. They would have the rules. There's no jobs less than two hours. That's why they're giving the two hour, I hate to talk, you're behind me. But a, but a minimum special duty is two hours. As to whether they would work that at night, I mean, LT, you might know more. I'm not sure if they would or not. I know, I know the problem was even during the day. You're right, there's two violations. You're completely right. It's, we go by, they're not there. They go around the block. If it's more of an issue at night, maybe LT, you can help out. I feel a little bitter.
Okay, for the Chick-fil-A at night, there's no real timeframe that we can say unless I know that everybody's going to eat at a certain time. We can monitor traffic. I understand the community concerns, but to be transparent about that situation, because I've driven by there. If they do hire, especially due to officer, um, once it's gridlocked, you gotta realize that there's almost so, there's only so many things the officer can do. The only thing that would add, would help is that if an officer is there, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, the public is not going to block the driveway. They're not going to do that, but the, we cannot help moving the traffic. So just, I just want to be honest with that. And then Chick-fil-A is probably thinking, well, I'm having an officer, but he's not really directing traffic. So it's like on catch twenty-two. So the biggest solution would be something that has to be worked out. Overall, with maybe the city, with something with the roadway, I would say. And that's what they did on the couple of it to try and mitigate traffic. But as much as possible, officers go by and if we can enforce violations. But at the same time, we're trying to, the officers are trying to be compassionate, right? With everything going on and they're going to go out there for a good meal and we're going to give them a $1.35 ticket, right? Because they're going to buy one $14 meal, right? Realistically. So we try to counsel them. But at the same time, it's something that enforcement alone will not resolve this issue. I'm sorry. I just be honest. It has to be something where the city needs to either mitigate the, the roadway and create a specific lane for Chick-fil-A. And have Chick-fil-A as a corporation pay for that, right? But they're not going, right? But I'm just saying that. But on our end, if the public do call, we will dispatch officers to address the parking complaint. In regards to special duty, I agree with you, premium will attract officers. And like anybody else, a lot of officers, depending what duties they have, you know, two hours is something a real, that's the minimum they have to come out for. And a lot of officers may not want to come out for a two-hour job at a premium wage, yeah. But nine, ninety percent of the time, the job will go free if it's premium. Yeah. Hope to answer your question.
If you could speak into the microphone, please. Thank you.
Like the community resource officers to serve as a deterrent on school campuses. I think the police present was more, presence was more of a deterrent rather than a actually issuing the ticket. I think like you said, that folks probably wouldn't block the driver or straddle two lanes if they saw an officer there. So, yeah. Thank you. Your comments are very helpful too.
Sorry.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Are there any further comments? Seeing none, are there any from attendees? Seeing none, thank you very much, Lieutenant Sergeant.
Again, I apologize for being late.
Oh, no, thank you so much. I'm glad.
Normally fires late. This time I was late. Have a good night.
Okay, and then we'll come back to Russell Pang, Governor Josh King's representative, and I believe Arthur had a question.
Uh, yes, Russell. Couple of weeks ago, we had a board meeting, a special meeting. And the discussion that came or you had it, there was this person from the state to address the Luna Lilo ward intersection. Can you give us any update on the signage or what's a solution he has come up with? Are you, are you aware of this discussion?
I, I am not. I'm, I'm, I'm aware that that intersection is always a challenge, but I'm, I'm not aware of the specific discussion that occurred previously.
Yeah, the, the discussion was centering around the possibility that a higher, I think up to Green Street, that, that stoplight is confusing people that are coming up ward. And they're looking at the, the Green Street rather than the Luna Lilo Street stop site. And going through the intersection, the other is the traffic coming down ward and people making a left-hand turn. Was there coming up ward into Luna Lilo and the amount of traffic that is flowing down in double lane when it's really should be a single lane. So your gentleman from the state said it is a state issue and he would get back to our board with a, with his possible solution would be.
Yeah, let me, let me double check on that. I'll go back to our traffic engineers and see if they can take another review of that, that area. Both at the, both going upward as well as downward. You're saying when they make that left turn onto the on-ramp? Is that part of the challenge when you're going downward?
Excuse me, it's making, as you're coming up ward.
When you're going up, correct.
Then you turn left onto Luna Lilo to go down along that, that roadway.
Okay, and you also said going downward also?
Yes, it's, uh, there's a double lane there, but it really is to be a single lane through. But traffic, uh, two lanes is crowded with the down and people coming up to make that left-hand turn. Does not see that second lane, uh, traffic coming down.
Okay, thank you. Hello. Thank you, Arthur.
Thank you, Russell.
Uh, I'll go, we're running short on time, so I'll go ahead and recognize Robert Peters as the last question.
I live on Ward Avenue, coming down tonight. And there's a car coming up, making the left on Luna Lilo, speeding. And it was almost myself and the car next to me, because there were two lanes that broadsided this guy. The presentation by the representative last time, he never mentioned the left turn coming upward onto Luna Lilo. And at the end of the meeting, I, I reminded him of that and he goes, oh yeah, that's right. So I want to make sure that, to me, living there and seeing it day by day, the biggest problem is coming upward, turning left on Luna Lilo and speeding to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, and with that, if anyone else has any questions, please take it up. Dylan, if you could give us your name, please.
Aloha. My name is Dylan Armstrong, formerly with Manoa Neighborhood Board. I've let my hair down for this meeting, but I do have a serious issue to bring to the attention of your board and the governor's representative. For about ten, twelve years, the city and county of Honolulu has been removing crosswalk markings in contradiction of state crosswalk law. That would be Hawaii revised statute, I believe, two nine one C dash seven three. A crosswalk is a crosswalk, no matter how much money a county government spends removing the markings. And as we are currently facing down the barrel of a bus strike and consistently having some of the highest pedestrian and bicycle fatality and accident rates in the country for many years now. This is a public health crisis. Who better to address this than a governor who has built his career on public health? The city and county will not do the work. This is the second administration in a row pursuing this illegal and faulty policy. There are many others, but I brought this to the attention of the governor's representative because of the HRS. I would specifically request that in the next legislative session, the governor work with the House or Senate Judiciary Committee to codify that city and county governments cannot ignore or contravene state pedestrian crosswalk law. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dylan. Okay, um, and like I said, in the interest of time, if anyone else has any further comments or questions of the governor's rep, please take it up outside the meeting. Thank you very much, Russell. Moving on to, thank you. Next up, Senator Carol Fukunaga.
Okay, on a slightly lighter note, uh, I want to focus on some positive news that is actually sort of city related. But about a year ago, we had a public safety meeting and one of the big areas that was a cause for concern was Cartwright Field. However, there have been a number of community groups and organizations that have been working to rehabilitate and remove a lot of the illegal activity in and around Cartwright Field. So this November, a group known as the Aloha Vintage Baseball Association is holding its vintage baseball season opener on November eighth and ninth at that park. And the games are open to the public. They're free. And it's kind of of interest that Alexander Cartwright, you know, the father of modern baseball, was a good friend of King Kalakaua. So between the two of them, that was the early place where baseball started. So I really want to encourage Makiki residents to walk down to Cartwright Field if you're available on November eighth or ninth. It's a little bit of color and history that is different from what we kind of traditionally encounter in this busy freeway laden neighborhood. And it's, um, it's something that I hope we can kind of take advantage of. I know this Makiki neighborhood board has been taking the lead in really trying to promote public safety features in Makiki Park. But right down the street, we now have some really positive things to talk about. And one last item, we have the Skyline Transit now open for public use on segment two. And for everyone who lives in Makiki, you know what it's like to deal with traffic going to UH or to the private schools in and around this region. So the skyline segment that is opening is going to pair up with express buses that will be stopping at the airport and at Boone Drive to be able to pick up students who are on their way to University of Hawaii at Manoa Campus. So as a possibility, if the mayor can reach his ambitious goal of 25,000 riders per day, we hope that some of those riders are going to UH Manoa Campus. And hopefully that'll give us a much safer and pedestrian friendly neighborhood once again. So thank you for everybody who is working hard to reduce pedestrian and other fatalities. I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you so much, Carol, for making it here in person. Unfortunately, due to time, I believe we'll have to cut the questioning short.
I can meet with people offline.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Carol. Okay, next we have Representative Della Bellotti. Seeing none, next up we have Representative Kim Kokko Iwamoto.
Everyone, my name is Kate. I'm the office manager for Representative Kim Kokko Iwamoto. In the chat, I linked the, I put the link to subscribe to Representative Iwamoto's newsletters. We just sent one out today. Board members, you should have received one this afternoon. Just a quick announcement that we are still hosting town halls throughout the district. So if you live in Kakaako, if you live within our district and you want to have us, have Representative Iwamoto come and speak at your building, please feel free to email us at repiwamoto@capital.hawaii.gov. Also, we are starting the bill drafting process. So if you would like to have, if you have an idea for a bill and would like to have it considered, please do, feel free to email or call us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kate. Again, in the interest of time, if you have any questions for Kim Kokko's office, please take it up outside the meeting. Okay, next we have Representative Ikaike Olds.
Aloha, thank you, Chair. Members, Representative Ikaike Olds, House District Twenty-three. Just wanted to follow up with our survey. So if you have received my survey and you have not yet submitted it back to us, please get it back as soon as you can. Right now, we have had about six hundred total responses. And to no surprise, right now, the current highest issue is homelessness and public safety. So it looks like we're going to be drafting some bills in regards to that. I do want to let you guys know that in the chat, I dropped a link for those who are interested at, for potentially working at the Capitol, we are hiring. So the link is, is available in the chat. Go ahead, take a look. We'd love to have you. That's all.
Thank you very much, Ikaike. Again, in the interest of time, if anyone has any questions for the representative, take it up outside the meeting. Uh, next up, we have Representative Andrew Garrett. Okay, seeing no one from Andrew Garrett, I believe we'll circle back to Robin Henskey from Tyler Dos Santos' office.
Hello, sorry, can you hear me? You can hear me, sorry.
Yes, we are just turning up your volume a little.
Sorry, sorry, I apologize. Um, so, um, yes. So, um, next Monday, we are having a bill signing with the mayor's office with our downtown BID measure, Bill Fifty-One. Um, I know that's a little bit, tiny bit out of the way, but it's going to be by Walker Park Fountain in downtown. Uh, I can put the details in the, in the chat, in the chat box. But, um, yeah, so that's going to be next Monday at eleven AM to eleven forty-five. Let's see what other. Let's see what other event. Actually, in the interest of time, we don't have a lot of events going on. But in the interest of time, if you guys need me, I'm available for questions. But that's a big, a big name notable thing that's happening in our office.
Okay, thank you very much, Robin. Yeah, in the interest of time, if anyone has any questions for Tyler Dos Santos' office, please be sure to take it up after the or outside the meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to board business and presentations. Approval of written summary for video record Thursday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Did anyone have any corrections? Seeing none, we have our minutes. Okay, next we have a presentation on Hawaii's exceptional tree program by Miles Ritchie. Miles? Okay, uh, looks like Miles Ritchie's not here, so if he's able to make it, we'll try and circle back to him. Next up, we have adopting a resolution urging the Department of Parks and Recreation to prioritize and expedite the Makiki Community Garden Fence Project. You should have a copy of that in front of you. I am motion to adopt the resolution, but at the, but at the very end, add representatives Andrew Garrett, Jenna Takanouchi as well. So in addition, Tom. Yeah. Okay, sorry, I lost my train of thought. So yeah, so, yeah, so adopt this resolution, but add at the very end to transmit in addition to Representative Della Bellotti, so Representative Jenna Takanouchi and Andrew Garrett. Do we have a second? Okay, second from Adam Kirchman. Tom.
Thank you, Chair. Tom Heinrich. Just to say, I had discussion with the main author of this, Amanda Kirby, who is, may still be on, online. And the key is just for clarification, so kind of please consider this is in that last paragraph would be to specifically include by adding to what you see there now, the managing director, the other representatives, that being Kim Koko Iwamoto, Ikaike Olds, and Andrew Garrett, who are listed on your agenda. Representative Jenna Takanouchi is not, but is a good addition. And then lastly, and the one we were most embarrassed about omitting, was to also add as the last person, the president of the Makiki Community Garden Association. Okay, so everything else is is fine with Amanda, but it would be beefing up who's directly to get copies if you in fact adopt this result. Thank you.
I'll recognize Amanda.
Hey, yeah, so basically what Tom said, I second. His draft that he handed me today was great. It's totally up to you guys if you want to vote on the resolution that I forwarded that's in front of you now or or we can push this another month to include a lot of Tom's drafts. But again, I'm so sorry that I can't be there. I am in the process of traveling.
No, thank you for your comments, Amanda. So it should be, it could be quick. So I motioned that we amend my prior motion to add Kim Koko Iwamoto, Ikaike Olds, Andrew Garrett, and the president of the Makiki Garden Association. Do we have a second? Adam, a second. Okay. Is there any further discussion on the amendment to adding all the aforementioned names? Arthur?
My only comment is this was presented at our meeting tonight. This was presented at our meeting tonight, not in our package that was sent to us. And in future resolutions that are on the agenda, but not included in our package, we should not be voting on them. I think it's a well worthwhile thing to do here, but we need advance notice.
Give me a moment while I verify that, but I believe it was on in the Google Drive. And board members are responsible for checking and reading the Google Drive packet.
Did not see it.
Okay, um, so back to the amendment, are there are there any objections or abstentions from adopting the amendment? Okay, sorry, I'm being advised that it would be a friendly amendment, so we don't have to go through the full motion to adopt the amendment. Uh, yeah, I'm receiving confirmation that, yeah, it was posted online. So on the, on the eighth of October. Okay, um, is there any further discussion on the resolution? Yes, Robert.
Have we discussed this at any time? This resolution?
Yes. Tom has a
In the last three months?
Yes, we actually brought it up last meeting.
We did bring it up for a vote.
No, because there was a, um, there, we, we could have made a lot of amendments, and so that's why the we brought in a freshly updated resolution. And I believe Tom might have a response to that as well.
And was this submitted by a board member or did this come directly from City Hall?
This was submitted by a board member, yes. Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Tom Heinrich. The nature of this resolution was discussed in open meeting at the last meeting by your member, Amanda Kirby. From the earlier discussion in the last meeting that the mayor's representative provided the information that I'm sorry, it was Taylor Dotte for Councilmember Scott Nishimoto provided the information that we just got word that Mayor Blangiardi has released as of September fifteen, the funding for this project. So the nature of the discussion was, timeout, there is no urgency to this reso. The bottom line is make sure that in the reso itself, that point is acknowledged so that the message is clear on its face that the board, if adopted, is urging, you know, continued rapid attention to this project. But that you have an appropriation, you now have the mayor's release of the funding, a lot of other things can get going. So that was discussed. And in fact, a writ, they, the draft as done by Amanda at the last meeting then was held back in order to make those amendments to the, to what you have in front of you now. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Yeah. Are there any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, our resolution is with its friendly amendments is adopted. Yay. Okay, moving on to adopting a resolution to encourage the state legislature to prioritize comprehensive pesticide reform. We were distributed this resolution last time, in addition to the presentation that Amy Prusa's office made. Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution? I motion to adopt, yeah. Did I hear somebody?
It's Sam.
Okay, Sam, motions to adopt the resolution. I second. Is there, as the one who, I believe Yvonne Yoro might be here to talk about the resolution?
Hello, Chair, board members. There's not much else I want to share about the resolution, but just thank you so much for putting it on the agenda for today. If you folks have any questions, I'm happy to answer. But I do want to be forward because I remember that at the last meeting, member Adam, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, asked a question and I'm, our office is still working on, working with the Department of Health on figuring out what's going on with just tracing water, groundwater and water supply. So once we get more information, we'll email the, the chair and hopefully inform that to you.
Thank you very much. Yep, Richard?
Comment about will this law in any way impede application of firearm, of fire ant pesticides? You know, it's important what this, what's this resolution wants to do, protect our groundwater.
Right.
But yeah, is there any conflict in effectively and quickly addressing, you know, pesticide problems?
So we're not restricting the use of pesticides. In fact, we're just, one of the main criteria of our resolution is requesting better reporting by applicators. So having more details in what they're spraying, when they're spraying it, the amounts. If they're large parcels, like ten acres or more, sorry, if you're if parcels are ten acres or more, just having details about where exactly on those parcels they were spraying so that folks or neighboring communities are aware of what can can decide for themselves whether or not they need to evacuate or do something to really around agricultural parcels. But it shouldn't impede on any of the work of folks dealing with invasive species.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Arthur?
I have one, excuse me, I have one question. It says, be it further resolved that the state require, you know, regular soil, water testing. Who is going to monitor this and would the better word be state provide regular soil and water testing?
So we're requesting another meeting with the Department of Ag and the appropriate branches to decide who would be best suited for doing this kind of testing. Or if it's should be going to another department, I know that the Department of Health with their safe water, safe drinking water branch or division, they do water testing. But that, we can, we can decide when we meet with the Department of Ag, who would be best suited.
Thank you very much, Arthur. Are there any further questions? Seeing none. Any other further comments? Seeing none. Are there any objections or abstentions to adopting this resolution? Seeing none, we've adopted the resolution to encourage the state legislature to prioritize comprehensive pesticide reform. Okay. Thank you so much, Yvonne. Okay, moving on to discussion on Honolulu's Bill Seven, Ordinance Nineteen dash eight relating to affordable rental housing. We're lucky enough to have gotten, excuse me, Gavin Thornton from the, the city's Director of Housing Policy here today. Thank you so much.
Aloha. Thank you so much for having me this evening. It's just a real pleasure to be around people who care about their community so much, and I just want to mahalo you all. And I don't know, Chair, is like five minutes good? I know you still have kind of a robust agenda, thankful that Miles taken some of his time maybe. Just five minutes, all right?
Given that Bill Seven's been on our agenda for quite a while and a lot of us are very interested in it, five minutes should be fine.
Great, great. Well, thank you. So again, my name's Gavin Thornton. I'm the Director of Housing Policy, which is a relatively new position at the city and county in a very new department, the Department of Housing and Land Management. The city hasn't had a housing department for about thirty years. And so we are in the process of building a new foundation for how we do our housing work. And, and that's really my reason for being here tonight. I want to share a little more context with you before I jump into the Bill Seven discussion. And for those of you that aren't familiar with what Bill Seven is, I've already heard a couple of things about it tonight. The project that's getting the fire calls and the tree that's getting cut down, those are Bill Seven projects. These units that are in fill, that are coming into your neighborhood, Makiki in particular is a place where a lot of these projects are going up. That's what I'm here to talk about tonight. Let me just start with a little big picture perspective, though. So I'm sure everybody has heard a lot about the housing crisis, how we're fifty thousand units in the hole and how we need more affordability. And I don't disagree with any of that. But I want to share a little bit of a different perspective as well. And that is that our housing problem is a problem of paradox, of competing goals. On one hand, our economy and the individual wealth of the majority of people in Hawaii and in the nation relies on rising real estate values. And when prices fall, the economy takes a big hit and jobs disappear. And you know this because the times when housing prices fell the most with the Great Depression and the Great Recession, and those were not good times. So on one hand, we depend on housing prices, real estate prices going up. On the other hand, we talk a lot about the importance of housing prices going down so that Hawaiians people, so that our people can afford to stay here. And so these goals are in direct opposition of each other, which makes real solutions really hard. We're really not set up to solve complex problems like this, at least not in my experience. Cooperation is key to solving these really challenging problems. And we don't trust developers. We don't trust government probably, and you probably don't trust me. And increasingly, we distrust one another. So as our housing affordability worsens, we are losing Hawaii's people and we are losing its culture. For me, the housing crisis is a crisis of diametrically opposed goals, a crisis of ineffective problem solving, and a crisis of cooperation and trust that is resulting in the loss of our people, people and our culture. And so the way that I view my work and the work of our department is a lot more about than just about getting housing built and getting more affordability. But it's about being a positive force for building trust and building collaboration for problem solving. And, and so that's really why I'm here tonight to talk, to, to practice that with you all, to talk about Bill Seven, which I know these projects are going up in, in your community. So the, the background on that, Bill Seven was passed in two thousand nineteen. And it was intended to make it easier for small property owners to build walk-up rental housing on underused lots in the urban core. It was intended to cut through some red tape, make it more financially feasible for local builders to create small affordable units. And it's actually been one of the few programs that's been able to build more units. But I assume most folks here know that it's not, it's far from perfect. It's far from perfect. I've heard by talking to a lot of folks, your, your chair here, Chuck Lee, and other folks in the room. I've heard a lot of the problems that people in Makiki and elsewhere are experiencing as these projects go up. Issue with affordability, issues, issues with parking, issues with the house next door just going down all of a sudden with no notice. And then something new and large and very different popping up in its place. I've also heard, I've also talked to a lot of developers, it's my job to do that. I've talked to developers who describe why it's not working well enough for them. And they have very, I think, like good perspectives and valuable points. And I guess I'm over my five minutes. Do I have a little more time, Chair?
If you could summarize your remarks, thank you so much.
Certainly. So, I would love to be able to listen to everybody. I was hoping a little bit to be able to listen for more concerns, if you could share more. But I brought business cards, that'll maybe have to do instead. And I'd love to, for anybody that wants one, pass it out. Also, I don't know if I can voluntold Chuck to also collect your concerns. We've had a few good hours of conversation. I just want to make sure we've got everything that we're really understanding the issue in as comprehensive way as possible. So, mahala.
Okay. So, I know some folks are burning to ask questions, so we'll open up to the board first. Are there any folks on the board interested who have questions? I'll start with John Steelquist, then I'll go into Adam. Oh, John, if you could, here's the mic.
Hello? Are you with us yet?
I'm here.
Okay, good. Thank you. Is there a chance of just throwing away Bill 7 and starting over?
Unlikely.
Really? Because Bill 7 has really been awful. The one that's destroying our community. We have a small building, it's gonna be, go from one story to seven stories and no parking and no access for buses and it, no one would ever want to live there. And so, they just threw it all and said, well, nobody has to worry about that because we don't have to follow the rules and the rules are provocative to get good buildings. So, we need somehow to get some of the rules back in Bill 7, not out of it.
It's definitely why I'm here tonight. It's, it's part of the work. My honest assessment is it's unlikely that council policymakers are gonna throw out the bill. And so, I think we have an opportunity five to six years after it was passed to do a hard look at what's working, what's not, and make the, make changes that need to be made. I don't have an expectation that we're gonna arrive at some kumbaya moment where everybody agrees and we have great consensus. What I do hope for is that this is a process where people are genuinely heard, listened to, facts are made based on people's real life experiences and the data and the facts. I think that's the best that we can do and I hope it will get us somewhere much better than what you're experiencing now.
Thanks, John. Next, Adam?
Yes, excuse, you have to excuse my ignorance on this topic, but I'm, you mentioned prices going up in housing. And it's been my experience understanding, maybe it's different here. But the reason why a lot of that price is in housing, specifically, especially in renting and buying homes is large organizations buying up these many, many places and then just raising their rents to the point where the population can't afford to live there anymore, but they're beholden to these organizations. So, my question is, if you're renting these new section, these new houses, these buildings out, what organizations are renting them? What organizations are in charge of them? And how are they allotting or how is there any regulation on how they charge the public for living there?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a great question. So, for these Bill 7 projects, they have a rent cap, they have a maximum that they can rent the, the units out for. They have an affordability period that right now is 15 years. I've heard concerns about are we getting our bang for our buck as a community and the sacrifices that we're making for allowing these to go up, where they're going up, at the size they're going up, with some city subsidy. Right now, there's an affordability period of 15 years, there's a rent cap. The developers, as far as I know, currently are like, are people that live here. It's not like these large corporations.
Okay, can I just follow up? Sorry.
Go for it.
We're looking at, you know, some, some areas in Makiki that are, you know, we're getting these vintage stores and young kids are coming in here and they're, they're wanting, it's becoming trend. There's a possibility of like some Makiki area becoming trendy and, you know, becoming trendified. My concern with that, and it's great, I'm glad money's coming in. My concern with that is that if this happens in 15 years, right around the same time as say your cap ends, was to say that they're not, okay, now this raises the prices up and then the people who, who've loved and lived here for a long time no longer can afford it.
My concern too.
Nope. Yes, if you could come up to the microphone and give us your name, please?
So, Cameron Black, and I just wanted to follow up on, on what you said about the developers being local. So, what level of ownership or investment has to be local? Because sure, there is a local representative, but it's Japanese money or whatever. And I don't, that's nothing against Japanese. I just know the building across the street from me was definitely heavily invested by foreign Japanese investors. My, my question is, yeah, so sure, Don Huang is, is local, but how much of that building does he own versus outside investment?
I'm glad you, I'm glad you said it because I was thinking about it, that I needed to clarify. Yes, I don't know details on financing. I do have an awareness that the developer that you mentioned, another developer is using outside investors to purchase the, to purchase the properties and make it work. That is correct.
Thank you very much. Chuck?
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to say something to, so everybody knows a few things. Gavin and his cohort in, in the Housing Department, Kevin Ogier, they asked to be here to, to address these issues with you. We didn't drag them by the feet and hair to come here today. So, I just want everybody to know that. And I also want everybody to know that what he said about trust, listening compassionately and acting compassionately is very true because as you can see for the little presentation that he has, I hope you can feel that about him. You know, a number of us have dealt with him directly and we can tell that, you know, he's pretty much the real deal. So, thank you, Gavin.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you.
I'll recognize Robert and then I'll come back to Richard.
You haven't mentioned, we have several condos. Every one, the insurance has gone up 30 and 40%. The maintenance fee because we have to replumb the entire building, 31 floors have to be replumbed. This is expensive for the owner. We have to raise our prices. You haven't addressed this. I mean, it's major in Honolulu. All these older condos, they're gonna have to redo the entire systems. They haven't talked about the electrical yet. And how many of you in here have had Hawaiian Electric turn off your electricity at 12 midnight to 6:00 in the morning? That's what they're doing at our condo. I have to take a cold water shower, if you can believe it. I wish you'd look into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Richard?
You know, I, I supported this bill from the beginning and I still do, but post-management needs to be addressed. I mean, you've heard the concerns of the one down on Ernest Street, that there's somebody renting that's just making the people around there very uncomfortable beyond that. So, yeah, the, the people that are managing these places have to, their foots have to be held to the fire so that become a positive impact on the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard. I see folks online, so I'll recognize Sam first and then Amanda. Sam?
Okay, one of the, one of the big questions that were brought up at a meeting was on Pensacola Street across from the post office, there's a building that has been complete for at least two months and nobody has moved in. So, the question is, should there be a ordinance that says that they have to fill the building instead of this leaving it empty like that? I mean, there seem to be being very selective on who they want in their building. So, I'd like somebody to look into that.
I actually, I actually have. And I've been told that it's an issue with the sprinkler system. So, it's actually not move-in ready yet. I don't think it's in anyone's benefit for, for that building to remain vacant. I don't think the developer is excited about that fact. But it's an issue with the sprinkler system. I don't know the nitty-gritty details, but something along the lines of being told by the contractor, it'll be ready in two weeks for many, many weeks now.
Thank you, Sam. Amanda?
Hi, yes, thank you so much for joining us tonight. Two things, what Richard said earlier about the property management, we're definitely seeing a trend in multiple Bill 7 properties where once the developer is out, we get a good three months of property management. And then after that, it's, it's really nothing. Security issues, theft issues, vandalism issues, and HPD is at a loss. So, I don't know what could be done, but that is something that should kind of be looked at. It's definite, they're being dropped completely. And nobody in the community can reach out to anyone because that property managing company does not, you know, reply. But I know that's not a you issue, it's just something that we're noticing definitely. So, we would appreciate any support with that. Secondly, though, I do want to highlight that a lot of these places are studios or very, very small, which is totally okay. We live in a dense housing area and understand. And these Bill 7 properties where they are income restricted are great for folks coming out of college, you know, keeping the local families, having their children be able to live in the same community that they grew up in. Amazing and being able to protect that rent amount. But I do want to highlight a lot of these places, the developers are putting the restrictions of 30 to 60% AMI, where 30% is $31,920. And that is higher than a full-time minimum wage job in this county. So, I would like to see if possible, even though it isn't a profit for the developer in certain situations, but we really are missing that 0 to 30% AMI window where a lot of our kapuna who are on social security fall in, the people coming out of college, full-time college students, or people that are just trying to get by and reintegrate into the work environment. We're really missing an opportunity to help find housing for those folks. Thank you.
Mahalo. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Are there any further, yes, I'll recognize the lady first. If you could come up and speak into the microphone and give us your name?
Okay, hi. My name is Sonia Ligushi. I'm actually a resident of Makiki since many years, 50 plus years. I actually moved to Makiki when the townhouse on Luna Lilo and, what should we do? Is that Luna Lilo and Victoria was the only condo in Makiki. If you can even imagine that, no concrete buildings in Makiki. I saw all the gracious, beautiful, stately homes come down and, and this is what we have, a concrete jungle basically. I'm here to support Bill 53 and it's important, I think, for everyone, especially those that live on Ernest Street and, and nearby, those that are living on Wilder. But first, the onsite property manager, I think, is, is critical. Although I don't live on Ernest Street, I am having to call 911 because there are people coming, gravitating up. We have a private lane, it comes up our private lane and HPD knows us already. They know our landlords. It would be nice to have a property manager there at that building, especially for those that live on Green Street that can call that person and say, hey, can you call HPD and you talk to the, the officer? Because you're empowered, you, you are the manager. Whereas when I call, I, I mean, I have to be an owner. My tenants are not, you know, necessarily believable to come in and give issues to. The second is the parking requirement. If you live in Makiki, you know it's a problem. But what really threw me was that the, the development on Luna Lilo and, on Wilder and Pensacola is 90 plus units with nine parking spaces. We are already adamant, you know, people are already blocking driveways. They're having towed away, they're leaving their cars there because if they have two cars, they're only using one. And so, I anticipate there are gonna be angry people when you have 90 potential cars trying to park on the surrounding streets. Third is public hearing. I think from a change management perspective, if you're familiar with change management and the methodology, you really need to engage all your stakeholders at the beginning. And it's before the change occurs that you need to get input. And no, you can't satisfy everyone. And I have this example of with employees, you can tell them what it's gonna be, you take their input and you end up with a product. And in the end, these folks have to decide if they can live with it or they can't. And if they slowly, what you see is that they will show slowly adopt. Some of them will drag their feet, they'll cause problems, but eventually they'll adopt. But then you're gonna have a percentage of them that just have to quit. And I think that you're, that's what you're starting to see in Makiki now. I mean, these, these environments, especially for elderly, is really not acceptable to have be, having to call 911 for harassment, for parking violations, for blocked entrances. So, my recommendation, I don't want to leave without some recommendation, is that there be a scoreboard somewhere that is transparent to all of us of where that development is, you know, and doing it early, where the development is, when it's being finished, who do we call? You know, and then the scoreboard being metrics. I think, I don't know if the city has metrics for success and failure, but things like occupancy, I know a lot of the things people have mentioned here, I think I've, I've kind of noted myself that you need to, to make public, who's renting, who are you renting to? Are you, what we're suspecting is that there's a lot of Section 8 and there is nothing wrong with that. But unfortunately, that attracts a lot of negative human beings too. And I think that's probably what Ernest Street is seeing. So, one, that's one scoreboard and I'm sorry, I'm taking a lot of time. The occupancy, you know, whether it's, it's market rentals or not, HPD and, and resource utilization. You know, I would like to see an HPD report saying, yeah, we got called to this many calls at this affordable housing. Whether that's a privacy issue, I don't know. But I think as neighbors, I think we're entitled to know that and to see the numbers go down because that's really what should happen after you gather those metrics and you act on them. And then the last thing I, we've seen is homelessness. I think that somehow these projects attract homeless people, whether it's in the construction phase that homeless like to come there or that the people who are occupying are inviting them. But you know, the utilities, the shelter, the resources there, I think, are, are usable by homeless people. And for instance, lastly, the example is the Luna Lilo and Pensacola Pence Metro. I mean, we've actually seen homeless turning the tap on your water controls, yeah, and using the water. So, when you said sprinkler system, I thought, was that related to your sprinkler system? You know, these homeless folks tinkering with your, your water supply. So, anyway, so I think transparent planning, accountability, I think all of us neighbors want accountability, applying change management methodology, I think engaging your, your stakeholders. And I think mostly to remember that this was a very gracious neighborhood and it still is. I think the people who live here, I think there are examples here that we love our community and we welcome folks. I mean, we, we have to, we live with probably the densest square mile in the state of Hawaii. But you, I know that you will take this with you, but that, that that's taken to heart. And then I strongly urge the board and the powers that be will support Bill 7 and some start to make modifications to Bill 7. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your very comprehensive remarks. Thank you very much for your very comprehensive remarks and super thoughtful. Mahalo. In the interest of time, uh, I believe we can take one or two more comments. Michelle, if you'd like to come up?
Michelle Luke, I'm a resident at, um, Pahalimoi. I've, I've had a chance to meet with Gavin a few times. Um, I-
If you could speak a little closer to the mic.
Sure. I echo Chuck's comments. I, I think this is the first time that the community has actually had a voice with the government about Bill seven, uh, which is refreshing. This board a year ago passed a resolution, um, concerning the sixteen-seventeen project with, which is about to begin demolition in our neighborhood. Um, that's a good starting point for some of you who are not familiar with Bill seven. It has the history outlined to that. Bill fifty-three, which was introduced by, um, Sakamoto, is an attempt and a reflection of community concerns about how there are no guardrails whatsoever. The developers are doing whatever they want to do, putting these projects wherever they want to because Bill seven is deemed billed as a matter of right. And there are some very responsible developers. Unfortunately, there are many who are not. And I'm going to call out Paul Lamb because he has never engaged. When this board has invited him to address issues, he's never participated or even responded. He hasn't responded to the community. He is foreign investment. He, on Lamb Development, if you go to his site, he is soliciting outside investment for these projects. So how is this helping affordable housing long-term? Over here, in fifteen years, when these projects don't have to be maintained as affordable housing, he's going to kick all those people out. And he's going to up his rents. And he's going to have had the benefit of no real estate taxes, no property taxes, not having to do infrastructure costs, all subsidized by our taxpayer dollars. He's going to have grants that right now could be as much as fifty thousand per unit. The project up at our place is a fifty-three unit, six-story building on the side of Punch Bowl, where three homes used to be, single-story homes. That's, that's more than a monster home, which the city doesn't approve of. Yet how is it that we can, you know, have this happen without community input? You cannot do affordable housing by just saying, throw money at developers. There has to be accountability. We need to know where our money's going. Do we have a return on it? Is it accomplishing what it's supposed to? In my view, it is not. It is failing horribly. And Gavin, not to put you on the spot, but you're brave enough to, to sort of pick up this fight and we appreciate it. But at the mayor's level, at the city council level, you know, everybody behind the scenes agrees with us, but nobody says it publicly. And the mayor has not appreciated these concerns. He has, um, celebrated each project that has gone up as an affordable housing project. And that needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, um, unfortunately, I believe, yeah, we've got, I know traffic is very important to us, so, um, I'll go, I'm sorry, Claire, I'm going to go ahead and cut this short. Um, but certainly take, take it up with, uh, Gavin. I, I hope you can stick around a little bit and mingle with the folks.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, thank you so much again, Gavin, for being able to make it. Okay, uh, moving on to the discussion and report on the September twenty-twenty-five special meeting on traffic safety. So we had the special meeting. I still have to write the minutes or submit the minutes, but, um, we once again failed to pass the resolution, uh, requesting a traffic study on, uh, on the traffic in the area around Chick-fil-A and QVR. And we failed to pass a motion to, um, what do you call it? A second right-hand turn lane from Kino onto Pensacola. I did, uh, one of my complaints, uh, was that nobody from DTS was there. Uh, we had the, um, the parking game folks show up, which, uh, unfortunately, they were there to, um, take back our comments at DTS. So, um, I did receive a, uh, email from Mike Formby, the, uh, managing director, that they will make sure, if we schedule another meeting, they will make sure that DTS will show up to that. And bearing that in mind, uh, that's why our upcoming next regular meeting is November twentieth. It's very close to the holidays, very deep into November. Um, and so that's why I wanted to bring up the, uh, idea of, do we want to hold a special meeting a little closer to us? Because November is, or November twentieth is so close to the holidays. No. Okay, so I'll go ahead and have, I'll get back to Mike Formby and ask him to show, have DTS show up, uh, November twentieth. Think that looks, I'm seeing a lot of nods, okay. Perfect. Um, and then, uh, do we have anyone who would like to give any comments on, uh, the discussions that we had on the special meeting, uh, for September? Lindsay?
Thanks Chair Char, thanks for the opportunity to chat with HPD in that forum. Um, but I wanted to thank all of you for having the special traffic safety meeting. I know it was additional time, so I truly appreciate it. I did want to just share, though, that it was disappointing that the discussion around the resolution for Chick-fil-A Makiki among the ongoing hazards shifted away from safety and instead centered on personal relationships, specifically from two board members who voted no. The issue being voted on was about traffic safety, yet both board members justified their votes by citing concerns over franchisee Zane Didasco's personal finances, as well as his positive community contributions. If that's how decisions are made, let's be thorough because Chick-fil-A's corporate record tells a different story. Its charitable foundation has donated millions to organizations that fund harmful conversion therapy for children and oppose diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. That is not community care, it is discrimination funded at scale. Meanwhile, the room that night was full of QVR residents who have devoted countless hours to this community. Among them are people who support domestic violence survivors, lead workforce development initiatives, champion diversity, equity, and inclusion causes, and have even served as federal appointees under President Barack Obama. These are outstanding community members. But again, none of that should have mattered, just as Zane's resume shouldn't have. This vote was about traffic safety. And the facts are clear. Chick-fil-A Makiki continues to operate in violation of its approved traffic plan, creating unsafe and unlawful conditions, and you heard HPD agree earlier. Its operational model itself is a problem. It forces unsafe backups onto Baritanga Street, creates congestion, and leaves customers without parking. And while some board members give weight to personal relationships, let's remember that Zane has not attended a board meeting where Chick-fil-A Makiki was discussed. If he truly cared about the community, he would show up. Being business-friendly cannot mean being accountability averse. If not a resolution, just wondering what this board will do now, and I do feel hopeful that DTS will show up um, on November twentieth, um, at that meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Do we have any other comments on the, Tom?
Thank you, Chair. Tom Heinrich. Uh, I've spoken with the chair, uh, previously, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, great appreciation for the couple of special meetings that this board has held. Uh, the limitations on that, however, is when the special meetings have been held, you do not have the, the, uh, inclusion of WebEx. Uh, and the, the burden is on whoever on this board to actually take the minutes, prepare the minutes, do all the rest of that in the way of the logistics. However, at that last meeting, having to do with a number of different issues, such as that area of Ward Avenue overpass, uh, and stuff, uh, there was some very good discussion. And ultimately, what needs to be done, I suggest Chair on that, uh, is to devote a few minutes, uh, of reading at, say, the next meeting. Uh, uh, kind of a quick summary of one of the things that came up. Uh, as was asked earlier, is there going to be a report back? You know, that request made to, to Russell Pang. Uh, but in that regard, uh, I strongly, uh, urge the board to really give more time and have more, uh, special focus on certain topics. Uh, I appreciate the comments by several of the members of the audience this evening, uh, having to do with affordable housing, Bill seven, Bill fifty-three, or whatever. That's something that this board and the community should have a considerable amount of time to talk about, not just five minutes. So in that regard, there's a lot of things on the agenda, as I have spoken to leadership of this board, that do not need to be on each and every agenda. You can craft that agenda appropriately to give the time necessary. So special meetings that are not on your regularly scheduled evening, so that you also have WebEx, are very useful because you help give more time and, and clarify things. Uh, but in the big picture, uh, I do, uh, strongly urge the board, uh, to think about some of these issues that might be, um, the special topic, not a special meeting, but a special topic focus, uh, for some meetings, uh, in that regard. And, and same as my earlier comment about the permitted interaction group. It's a matter of making sure then that you kind of come to some clarity as to what you want to focus, uh, focus on. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for the scolding, Tom. I'll take it into consideration. Are there any further, uh, comments on the special meeting for your own traffic safety? Uh, like I said, um, I will certainly take Tom's, uh, advice into account and, um, do my best to clear November to really focus on the, whomever DTS winds up sending because we have so many traffic issues, uh, as we all know from having spent the full two and a half hours here just on traffic safety. So, um, please try and make November twentieth, and I hope the DTS guy can make November twentieth. Uh, we'll go ahead and move on to the discussion and recognition of Thomas Square Park's history. Uh, Robert?
Thank you. I talked with you this afternoon and about the meeting, and you said, oh, you lost the information I gave you last week. So we couldn't have a meaningful discussion. But you said I could have three minutes. I cannot discuss Thomas Square in three minutes. The last gentleman, you gave five minutes, and he actually went twenty-nine minutes and fifty seconds. I don't think there's a fair distribution of the amount of time that as a board member I need for Thomas Square. Drugs, homeless, lack of community participation, it goes on and on and on. I would like you to take Thomas Square, please put it into the special meeting agenda. So I can present this in more than three minutes. I need twenty-nine minutes like this gentleman have. So if you gave him twenty-nine, I'd like twenty-nine minutes, either at the next meeting or at that special board meeting.
Okay, well, um-
So what's your answer?
We are in the most, I mean, we're in your agenda item right now.
I want twenty-nine minutes.
Uh, unfortunately, the twenty, no, um, because we had, we voted on the three minutes for speakers, so we've been allowing-
He had twenty-nine. I'm a board member.
He did not speak for the full twenty-nine minutes. He was taking, uh, significant amount of comment from both board members and community members.
Others come up. I don't think you're being fair.
Well-
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I cannot express Thomas Square in three minutes.
I, I apologize. We, uh, if you are unable to summarize the remarks.
I cannot.
So, uh, okay, um, so I mean, we can give you the three minutes.
No, I do not. I want to be on the special meeting board.
Okay, you, you are asking for, you are asking that I do a special meeting entirely on Thomas Square?
Include this in the next special meeting.
Right.
So I won't keep hearing, in the interest of time, in the interest of time, in the interest of time.
Okay.
And you don't work in the interest of time. Not for Thomas Square, three minutes, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your comments. Are there any questions? Does anyone have any questions or comments on the Thomas Square issue? Seeing none, oh, yes, if you, okay. Okay, thank you for your comments. So he mentioned, uh, not into a microphone, that, uh, we should perhaps knock down the whole park. Uh, I'm sorry, and your name was, again, was Richard Ching? Claire?
I understand we're going to have a light show in Thomas Square Park for the holidays, and I think there's some sort of ongoing plan to have activity there and, uh, relocate the people who live there. But it's great to have a community park where people can congregate and have activities and events.
I have all that information, but I can't do it in three minutes.
Okay, Ian?
Thank you, Chair Char. Um, you know, Claire's comments just now made me realize with a significant amount of people who might be moved out of Thomas Square. At other times when sweeps have occurred, there hasn't always been aligned well with service providers and other folks like that. We've seen in the past when sweeps have occurred, significant parts of Makiki have increased homeless people on the sidewalks and streets. I think it might behoove the board to reach out to the city and state and maybe request that they be on the lookout for this or ask them to align those resources to mitigate impacts for the rest of the community. Thank you very much.
I have this information here to present, but not in three minutes. Do you hear the interest from the crowd? They'd like to hear it, but they can't hear it in three minutes.
Yeah, so like I said, I'll take your comments into consideration. Um, and certainly we can put Thomas Park in the, on the agenda in the future and keep it here. Are there any further comments? Okay, seeing none, uh, thank you very much, Rob, Robert. And then we'll move on to, uh, Nice Neighborhoods Committee, Harris.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um, just a couple of updates. We've been, uh, moving along quite, quite well. October, we decided to cancel the October meeting, uh, based on the progress that we've made to date. Uh, our next meeting will be on November seventeenth, Monday, at two PM. And also, we are working on a, uh, Kino, uh, uh, Community and Resilience Hub program and in partnership with the Honolulu, Honolulu Museum of Art. So, um, we had a meeting yesterday, and I'd like to thank Representative Biladi, Senator Fukunaga, Councilmember Scott Nishimoto's office, Taylor Dattia, um, was there, as well as H, Hawaii, um, the Fire Department, Honolulu Fire Department, as well as board members, uh, Char, Lee, and then myself. So, uh, we're moving along with, uh, putting together a community event for, uh, that's going to be, uh, focused on the Neighborhood Board, uh, Nice Neighborhoods, Honolulu Museum of Art activities, as well as talking about the Resilience Hub. And really, the Resilience Hub is, is really for this area. It, it makes a lot of sense because we have a lot of vertically, the, in terms of buildings. And the purpose is, uh, creating an evacuation relief in the event of fire, as well as, uh, for a shooter. And advocating for the elderly, the vulnerable families during a crisis situation, especially in multi-floor buildings and condominiums. So, uh, we're putting that together. And the, and the immediate pilot project is the streets that, uh, border along King Street, Alapai Street, Kino, and Pekoi, so that rectangle. I'm going to be, uh, will be able to, uh, provide updates, uh, to the board, uh, as we move along. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Harris. Uh, moving on to the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, John? Oh, if you could, oh, if you could speak into the, your microphone, please.
It's, it's a fairly large problem. And they have a two-year plan that is working on all the rest of it, but we need to get some input, and I can't do it all by myself. I'm looking for a couple more people interested in transportation planning. Nice thing about it, it's tied immediately to state and US DOT, so there's money that comes with it. So we can be there and do it. But I can't do it all by myself, so I need a couple of volunteers.
Do we have any volunteers to, uh, serve with John Sealquist on the Citizen Advisory Committee? Jeanvier? Okay. Oh, there, it is, uh, the meetings are in the middle of the workday. Does that still work for you? Oh, okay. All right, uh, in, in which case, um, I, I guess I will- Well, we, I mean, that, this meeting is, or that meeting is fairly important. So, uh, I, I suppose I'll step up for the Citizen Advisory Committee. Two-thirty on the first ones.
I'll, I'll, uh, step up. Okay.
Oh, and Adam? Okay. Okay. Okay, so Adam will be the, uh, is, are there any objections or objections from accepting Adam as the, um, being part of the Ompo Citizen Advisory Committee? Seeing none? Thank you very much, Adam, for stepping up. Okay, and then, uh, moving on to the Tuca announcement. So the, uh, Joyce Young could not make it tonight. So, uh, the United Korean Association of Hawaii has two events coming up. They've got movie night, uh, on Saturday, October twenty-fifth at five-thirty PM. Uh, I believe the, uh, the flyer is in our, uh, Google Drive. And, uh, the, exciting again that we have a kimchi day coming up on Saturday, November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, from ten AM to seven PM. Uh, for the kimchi day festival, the Lieutenant Governor will be attending, along with some other people from the city council and the legislature. There will be a lot of new fun contests and activities this year, including make-your-own-kimchi classes, best homemade kimchi contest, kimchi pajun eating contest, K-pop demon hunter sing-along and a photo-taking, wombok, uh, tossing game and a K-pop dance and song contest, a one thousand dollar kimchi slap fundraiser. Uh, and of course, a lot of delicious Korean food and kimchi for sale, lots of music and entertainment. Uh, students from various local schools and organizations will be volunteering, volunteering or performing, including, uh, RSVP, uh, Moanalua Middle and High School, Mariner School, Washington Middle, and most likely Punahoe and a few other schools. Uh, and then, uh, some folks are still signing up. If anyone would like to participate as a volunteer, contest participant, vendor, or sponsor, they can go to www dot bit dot L Y slash kimchi twenty twenty-five. I'm sorry. And if you have any questions, uh, you can email Joyce at J O Y C E at Hawaii, H A N I N dot org. Okay, um, and with that, uh, do we have a, oh, I'm sorry, board announcements. Next regular meeting, November, uh, Neighborhood Board number ten is scheduled to meet on Thursday, November twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, at six PM at Makiki District Park, the old Makiki Community Library, second floor, and online via WebEx. The meetings can be viewed on Olelo Focus forty-nine on the first Friday at nine PM and the third Thursday, uh, third Sunday, excuse me, at three PM. Uh, follow us at www dot facebook dot com slash Makiki NB and visit www eight dot honolulu dot gov slash NCO slash NB ten for Makiki Neighborhood Board info. Okay, and do we have a motion to adjourn?
Please.
Okay, move to second. Thank you so much, everybody.